I'd like to call this Freeburg Community High School Board of Education meeting to order. Would you please call roll?
Mr. Parrish?
Here.
Mrs. Staub?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Hennig?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Gauk?
Here.
Mr. Wilkerson?
Here.
Okay, we have a forum. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands for our nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Do we have any agenda changes this evening?
Uh, there are none.
Okay, at this time we'll open up the floor for public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? Any online?
Mr. Parrish?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I'm Michelle Fathi. I have two students currently at the high school, a freshman and a junior. And the reason I wanted to come tonight and I just wanted to, um, I know that you'll be deciding probably once we get guidelines from ISBE about the fall, um, school session, I would just wanted to, um, give my hopes that the board is going to consider bringing the kids back five days a week. I'm very fortunate, my kids are doing well. I mean, it's not, they're not, they would rather obviously be in school more and I think they would do better. But I know that there's a lot of kids that are really, really, really struggling, going remote. And so I just want to, um, express my concern and my feelings for, I know a lot of people that I've spoke to about the need to get back in school in the fall for five days a week. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
So, I'll just, I'm here. I'm Tanya Smith, I do have a son here as well. Um, I have a daughter coming in next year. I just would kind of like to reiterate what Michelle had to say on those comments. My sons had a variety of challenges with the remote learning. I am a little disappointed that the building plan can't be reconstructed, that these children aren't going to be able to stay in school through May. I think that they need it. There's more than just, um, the academics, it's also the socialization that I've heard from other people, um, that their children really need desperately. So, you know, I just would reiterate what Michelle had to say, if there's nothing that can be changed on the building project, um, I would really just like to encourage you to consider, um, how we can get these kids staying in the school and, um, you know, interacting with their kids in class, um, so that they can get the learning that they need and, uh, socialization as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, do you have any online?
No.
Okay. So, no more public comments. We've all had a chance to look at the consent agenda. Do we have any additions, revisions? Any corrections? If none, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Okay, Michael make the move, both motion. Daniel second.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mrs. Staub?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Hennig? Mr. Haas?
Aye.
Mrs. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Gauk?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
We did not.
Now it's time for the student members' report.
Um, so what's been going on lately is, uh, spring break is fast approaching and after that seniors are definitely all counting down the days to graduation. Um, the, as far as academics, the Y's team did compete and Mrs. Jung will give a more detailed rundown of that after me, but I'll keep it very general. Our team here won their sectional and beat other schools such as Columbia, Westman and Modern Day, and they're currently ranked sixth in the state. Um, I've talked to some of the people on the team and they're very hopeful, but they can definitely place top five at state. And so, they said they got a lot of practicing to do, but they think it's possible. And then, the community, uh, students of FCHS and their parents are intact. They did plan a senior prom at the Catholic Warvus on April 24th. Um, this is obviously separate from the school and then there will also be a separate junior prom at a later date in May. This is something I just wanted to, I'm sure you guys know this, but, um, yeah, I wanted to make you guys aware in case you weren't. Um, as far as the athletics, uh, all indoor group activities are currently practicing or competing, as cases in the area have only continued to decrease throughout the state. While many sports have been playing, there were still a few who haven't officially began competing yet. Some of these include baseball, girls soccer, softball and track and field. And then I did actually have, I had an athlete approach me at FCHS. He asked me to bring up a concern he has regarding the cost of attending FCHS sporting events. Um, in previous years, he stated that athletes in season would not have to pay to attend their friends' games in different sports. For example, someone in golf would not have to pay to attend a volleyball game. And this student would just like to know why the policy changed this year and was wondering if the policy is specific to this year or will continue in future years and what was the reasoning behind that decision? Um, and then with performing arts, uh, bands currently practicing for their pep game on Saturday and they were also practicing to play graduation.
Good. Any questions or comments? Can we find out an answer on it, Greg? Do you want to?
It's, it's, it's absolutely has to do with, uh, the changes this year and the limits on who, I mean, how many people can be in. You know, we have to account for all those people, so, um, if we just let every student come in that was in season, we'd be over the limit. So we set up a system where we had kids sign up and, so that's why. It's completely because of the situation this year.
Okay.
So it'll go back to the way it was next year.
Okay, that's understandable.
Before.
Thank you. And then, that's it up. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the principals' report.
Okay. So, a couple of things. We are going to be having the, um, honor celebration or the honors banquet that we've had in the past. It is going to be held on Sunday, May 2nd in the main gym. We just had the National Honor Society, um, induction ceremony yesterday and it was our first time doing it this way. We were able to have it in the gym, the kids were spread out six feet apart on the floor. They each got two tickets for parents to come and view it. It was the first time we'd set up the whole streaming cameras and everything else and I think that went over really well, so people who couldn't come, um, could watch it on the stream and it was recorded so they could watch it later on. So, kudos to Mr. Alt for getting that set up and, um, Mr. Miller, um, worked with the group and inducted forty-two new members yesterday. So, Evan was one of the speakers there, is one of the officers and, uh, it turned out to be, uh, the best it could be under the circumstances of what we've had and, you know, compared to the past and we're hopefully looking forward to having a more traditional ceremony in the future, but really proud of all those kids and the officers and Mr. Miller and it was a, it was a good event, so. So that takes us to the honor celebration, which we're going to hold in the same format. We'll probably have about sixty to seventy kids that are honored that night with the different awards. We're going to run it the same way, we're gonna, um, they're going to get tickets for family and, um, friends or grandparents to come, whoever's going to come to that. It's going to be at six o'clock in the evening on a Sunday evening. So trying to work around the, um, unique sporting schedule that we're doing now, it's been very difficult, so we are going to go ahead and host that on a Sunday night. The PSAT nine and PSAT ten, earlier, um, last month I think I told you the dates we were going to hold that, the state has now come in and canceled the PSAT nine and the PSAT ten. So students on those days, it was going to be April fourteenth and the twenty-first, those will return to regular remote days and students will have, you know, meet with their teachers and do virtual assignments. However, the juniors will still be taking the SAT on Tuesday, April thirteenth, okay? All ninth, tenth and twelfth grade students would be checking in on their Google classrooms this day. There will be no virtual classes on April thirteenth and the reason for that is because all the teachers will be proctoring the SAT test. The academic challenge team, um, Evan's already talked about this, congratulations to that team. Their sponsor, by Mr. Andy Morgan. The academic challenge team participated in the sectional on Wednesday, March third. It's a different format this year as well, they take it in their home school, it's all on the computer. The team finished first place and now they will participate as a whole team at the state competition in April. Super excited for them. Just to name off some of the scores, um, in physics, first place went to Elizabeth Proctor and second place to Josh Murs. Chemistry, first place Allison Colvis and second place Elizabeth Proctor. Biology, first place Anna Merly. Math, first place Josh Murs, second place Allison Colvis. Engineering graphics, first place Evan Saliner. Um, and as he mentioned, right now they got, uh, Mr. Morgan received a copy of all the scores throughout the state and just in the sectional, Freeburg had, um, ranked sixth overall, which is really outstanding and, uh, we wish them the very best as they compete in state in April, so hopefully more good news to come there. Let's see. Three hundred, the perfect game. I want to say congratulations to Brandon Kinzel for bowling a perfect game on Thursday, March eleventh at Bellar Bowl. It was his last match of his senior year and scored a perfect game, so congratulations to Brandon. Girls bowling, congratulations to them, they placed fourth overall in the sectional. Lauren Hunter placed first overall individually, earning the girls' southern shootout champion medal. The bowling team is coached by Craig Gilmore. And sectional was the final event for the bowling season, they did not do the final state series. A couple of things that are not in your packet that came up after the, after the faculties were put out. We had some good news today about ISBE quarantine information. They have removed the following symptoms from quarantine. Runny nose, congestion, upset stomach, which, you know, it is, um, coming up on allergy season, so I'm really thankful that we're not going to have to send kids home for those things. All other symptoms do remain. For seniors, graduation items, Justin's will be at the high school on Monday, April fifth and Tuesday, April sixth, for seniors to pick up their caps and gowns, announcements, et cetera. So seniors will need to have all their balances paid in order to collect their items or pay their balances on that day. That's all I got, thank you.
Any questions?
Oh, I do have one more thing, I'm sorry. Last minute, hang in there. As you can see, we've got some artwork up here from some of our art students. The art department decided to put together what they're calling the FCHS Art Hop 2021. Since we haven't been able to have parents come in the building, we haven't been able to really display anything for people to see, they're taking the art show out to the community. So, Freeburg Community High School, um, is proud of the progress our students have been making these past months as we watch them overcome so many challenges and persist. Will believe that their hard work deserves to be recognized and rewarded. With the helpful, help of local businesses, the hardworking students and the community at large, the art department has created an art hop event. Several local businesses will be displaying our students' artwork for the next few weeks. These students' persistence and dedication to their work should be recognized and appreciated. This event goes beyond honoring the students as it highlights the wonderful, hardworking businesses around us. Be sure to visit the following sites. Sophia Beal will have art posted at Wineman's Meat Market in St. Agoury. Nat Weber will have art at the Coffee Mill Diner, and that's in Smithville, I believe, I haven't heard of her yet. Haley Perdue will also have artwork at the Coffee Mill Diner. Justice Dickey at Countrymark, Shelby Hanson at Countrymark. Emma Heath at Countrymark, Miranda Cunningham at Countrymark. Riley Thompson at Reichschniders. The Easels, displaying the artwork tonight were purchased with a grant from the Freeburg Foundation. Some of the art at the board meeting will also be added to the businesses after tonight. Additional businesses will be displaying artwork throughout the near future. So, really great, so hopefully you'll get out and about and you'll be able to see some of, um, some of whatever students have been doing. Now I'm done.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any questions for Jill? All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, uh, we did, uh, get word that the SIR funds, uh, this is kind of like the second round of COVID relief for schools, uh, has come through. Freeburg will get about a hundred and sixty-two thousand extra dollars next year for that. We'll be able to use those things for basically anything that's considered COVID-related. So we've got some plans for some, uh, summer school, uh, some things next year that I'm going to talk to the board about later, that we can use those funds for. Let's slide a book date, a whole slew of laws were put into, uh, law, put into action recently by the governor. There are several changes for the school curriculum requirements. There are substantial things that we'll have to deal with. The good thing is they don't go into effect for the next couple of years. Some of them include things like two years of a language, uh, two years of a, uh, lab science and, uh, so it's concerning for especially some of our resource students that, you know, before we, until we get, uh, clarification on whether or not, you know, students like that are going to have those requirements. But there'll be some changes, uh, there's also some computer literacy, uh, requirements that are in there, so, uh, some of that is a positive, but some of those are a little concerning, so hopefully we'll get some clarification as we move forward. Consolidated elections coming up on April sixth, uh, the canvassing has to be finished by April twenty-seventh, so, uh, to seat our new board, we have the, a timeline to seat the board, so we don't have enough time to wait until the May meeting. Uh, there's, there, the canvassing will still be going on by the April meeting, so if there's a need to have a special meeting, um, I've tentatively set that for Wednesday, April twenty-eighth, so hopefully everybody can make that meeting. If you recall at that meeting, what we'll do is we'll seat the board, uh, elect officers and then you typically approve the board meetings for the coming months, uh, the coming year. And then also remind board members, uh, that you should be getting your statement of economic interests in the mail, uh, and those are due by May first. Uh, there was also revisions to the health guidelines by the IDPH. They, they made some adjustments, Jill talked about a couple, uh, but there's nothing in there that really was, uh, substance enough that would cause us to make any changes what we're doing this year. Uh, there's also been revisions to the IHSA outdoor sports, so I've been posting on about that, so we are able to actually, uh, permit five hundred fans, um, into the outdoor sports. It really only comes into play for varsity football, so what we did is we started selling, pre-selling those tickets and those are going fairly well, we're actually going to open those up, uh, tomorrow to, um, the, the public, uh, where they can actually buy up to five tickets. So, uh, there's still tickets available, if anybody's listening wants to buy tickets. Uh, one of the nice things that the conference did do though, is they, uh, decided that they were going to allow a hundred away fans to the varsity football game, so that allowed the, the families to come and see the kids. And that's one of the big pushes that we've had through all this is to try to get the families to be able to come and see, uh, these events. And I think that's all I have.
Any questions or comments? So, none, we'll move on to old business.
First item is consider approving the levy confirmation report. This is the report we get from the county clerk that, uh, clarifies the levy that we passed in December. I will tell you that the levy that they are putting out is exactly the same numbers that we put in, in, uh, December, except for the bond and interest payment will actually be about twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, lower. And that's because the, uh, bond sale that happened in January, we actually did better on the bond sale than we anticipated, so the, uh, repayment is going to be lower. So I'm asking the, uh, unless the board has the objections, I'm going to sign off on that, we'll send that off tomorrow. That is something that the superintendent does sign off on, uh, so there, there is no action the board needs to take, but if anybody had any questions on that, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Any questions?
I'm good with it, Doug.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item.
Okay, um, I know this was mentioned in public comments, um, we are starting to look at next year, um, obviously we planned quite a bit ahead. It is our, our plan, or, or, I shouldn't say our plan because that's something I'm asking the board to, um, allow us to do is to put that committee together. But it is my goal to have, uh, five day a week, uh, full days of school next year to start off in August. And hopefully, you know, we're at a point where we've got the vaccinations, uh, the herd immunity or whatever terms you want to use and, and we feel safe. I do anticipate that, that masks will still be mandated next year, I just don't see where that's not going to be. We, we are not probably going to get the final set of guidelines until, hopefully we get them by the end of the year. I would like to have, uh, a plan given to the board before the teachers leave for the summer. So my hope is to get something put together and have it ready for May. But again, the idea that, you know, next year's going to look as normal as possible. And I think every indication is, is that we're going to be able to do that. So, um, that's what we're shooting for, uh, but just, I, I want to put that committee together because there's some other things that we have to work through, um, just like we did with the, the two different times we met this year. So, again, no formal action needs to be taken. I don't know if any board members had comments about kind of seen in the future, six months, but I wanted to kind of give you an idea of the direction we were headed.
Any comments? I, we definitely want to get the kids back, um, five days a week if at all possible and we'll just have to see how things pan out this summer. Sad to think that you're probably right with the masks, but we'll just, we just have to wait and see. Because right now it's just a little bit too early, we don't have the crystal ball. Let's move on to new business.
Mrs. Ingles and the FFA have approached me about a SAE project, that's a supervised agricultural experience project. These are the projects that the kids take on, uh, they, they work through these projects all year long and then some of them actually take these on to the state and, and work on state degrees. One of our students wants to, they, they kind of tossed around a couple ideas. One of the ideas was kind of twofold, one was to, uh, find a place on the, uh, campus where they can have a project, where they can plant something. The other was to pay, uh, you know, kind of honor longtime FFA supporter Sandy Craft. And I know Larry, your husband's in the, the audience tonight. Sandy passed away, uh, suddenly not too long ago and was a great loss to the FFA and Freeburg High School. The idea is to, uh, take the berm, which is, you know, something that we've struggled to, to kind of keep that in shape and then have a student each year, uh, or possibly multiple years, because these projects can't last more than one year, take that on and basically, they're going to landscape it and they're going to keep, you know, uh, uh, keep it up to date and, and keep it in good shape. Right now they're looking at a rose garden and so what they're going to do is they're going to keep most of the, the big plants that are in there, the bushes and the trees, but there's a lot of the flowers and, and other things that have started to grow, so they want to clear that out. They also have funding, um, I know that, uh, I think the crafts have, uh, have received some morals, they're going to, we're talking about donating, FFA alumni and FFA are also going to use money. I did tell Mrs. Ingles that I would be happy to have the school cover the cost of the mulch. I don't know what that's going to be, but I anticipate it's only going to be several hundred dollars, I don't think it's going to be a huge amount. But it, I think it's a, it's a nice, uh, a nice idea to pay, uh, to honor, uh, Mrs. Craft, uh, but to also give these kids a project, and this is a project that wants the person that starts it. They're done, the next, another student can take it over. So it's really, kind of, it solves a little bit of a problem for us, but it also is going to be a really nice, uh, a beautiful spot, um, for, for the campus and, and for people to come by and see it. So, I'd like the board to approve it if you would.
Great. This is Mike. I'll cover the mulch, just let me know what it is.
Okay.
Any questions or comments on this? Seeing now we need a motion to move to approve the SAE FFA project as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We'll let, we'll let Gary make the motion and we'll let Dennis second. Vicki will get what you do the next.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mrs. Staub?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Hennig?
Aye.
Mr. Haas?
Aye.
Mrs. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Gauk?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item?
Uh, this is the first reading of the proposed changes to the, uh, parent student handbook for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two school year. Mrs. Crunk is going to go through those for you.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started. The first one, uh, the first recommendation is a health requirement and the only thing that changed on that is, um, proof of dental examination performed by licensed dentists is just for ninth grade students only. So, um, that's the only thing that's changed in that. Let's see, recommendation number two, um, this is new, it's, um, I think you guys talked a little bit about it at the last board meeting, it's Students Online Personal Protection Act. This come down from the Illinois, um, Principal Association, they have a model handbook and this is the language that they want us or recommend us to put in our handbook. I think it's important, it just helps protect our students and their, um, information, so, and I think Mr. Alt's working on that right now to make sure everything's safe with that. So that's just the language, it's quite a bit, so. Then we got number three, the Iron Midge Award, we've already decided to, um, remove that award, so I'm just taking it out of the handbook. And then number five, um, infractions, um, wait, oh, no, sorry, this one. Number four, code of conduct. Okay, so this is some new language, we have this in our handbook, um, but the, like I said, the model handbook had, the wording I felt like was a little bit better, but the new one, part of this is during periods of remote learning, so any consequences or infractions against the code of conduct also now includes remote learning. Hopefully we won't have to use that after this, but this is a recommendation from the Illinois handbook to put that in there. So, basically I cleaned that language up and moved that under code of conduct because it was in, if you look at recommendation number five, um, it was actually, the information was in there except for didn't have remote learning and the wording's just a little bit different, so like I said, I cleaned that up, put that under code of conduct and then that takes us into number five, infractions and consequences. You can see I, um, put a line through that information and just cleaned that up, so that's now going to be under infractions and consequences. And then, um, dress code, this is new, this actually came from the, um, committee that we put together with parents and students. And one of the things that they want to be allowed to do is wear spaghetti strap tops and tank tops. I will tell you that they voted on it, the majority won, so that's why I'm bringing it to you. I do not think it's a good idea that, to have that dress code here at the high school, that's just me, um, but that's something, and I voice my opinion, um, but again, you know, we have a committee for a reason and so I want to bring that to the board and you guys can ultimately make that decision. And then, number seven, sexy, uh, Ms. Jung and I worked on, you know, we have situations that come out throughout, come up throughout the year and we needed to clean up some language in this area and add some more information, especially now that kids have their Chromebooks, um, they take those home and the way that it was worded was it said school property, but it made it sound like on, physically on school property. So we just changed the language so that way students understood that their Chromebook is school property. So anything that's inappropriate on there could possibly come up to discipline consequences, so. Number, recommendation, recommendation number eight, computing device procedures. This is some new language from Mr. Alt, um, that he just wanted to clean up. Mr. Alt wanted to update this information based on situations that have come up in his office. The school used to cover one screen, but it was getting abused so badly that the school was replacing anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred screens a year at forty dollars a screen. So, um, he cleaned up that language and then that takes us into recommendation number nine, which is the new language. In the event that device needs repaired due to student negligence as determined in item F, fees may be incurred up to the entire cost of replacement of the device if it cannot be repaired. Costs to repair items due to student negligence are listed below. One of the changes was a lost damage charger went from thirty to thirty-five dollars and a new one is damage lost case, um, that is now thirty-five and then to replace the entire Chromebook, it's two hundred and fifty dollars. Over the last several years, the cost to repair, um, devices have been analyzed and determined that over seventy-five percent of damage that the district was covering was due to student negligence and not normal device wear and tear. The modification suggests removes the school paying for all damage irregardless of how it happened and placing the cost of repair due to student negligence on the students themselves. The school will still continue to repair, replace any device due to normal wear and tear. The schedule to repair, replace included is based on current cost of available parts and this, um, portion could be adjusted on a year-to-year basis depending on, you know, and I think the kids got new Chromebooks and stuff, so obviously that's when I make, you know, a five dollar adjustment probably in the price, so. Number ten is extracurricular code of conduct, um, new language, it's no longer the Y's team, it's now called academic challenge. Eastern took over for, um, U of I and so they changed the name to academic challenge, so that's just a change in the handbook to change the name. Recommendation number eleven, um, this information was updated, um, through the guidance office and basically it just says, um, FCHS currently offers SWIC dual enrollment courses in statistics, welding one, welding two and manufacturing. And then, recommendation number twelve, college entrance exams, um, that language was taken out. That language was taken out because there's no, the college board is no longer offering subject tests. So you can see where I just marked that out, and the new language will look like that at the bottom. Recommendation number thirteen, standardized assessment program. You can see I took out F, which is the SAT subject test, and the reason for that is again, there's no SAT subject test anymore, and you can just see where I changed the lettering just to make sure it's accurate in the handbook. Recommendation number fourteen, clubs, organizations, activities. We started a new group this year called No Place for Hate, so that will be placed in the handbook, opt to approve. Recommendation number fifteen, Saturday Scholars, we've been doing that for a long time, but just for some reason it wasn't in the handbook, so we've added that. And then number sixteen, new language for the Academic Challenge. Mr. Morgan gave me a description of how he would like that to go in the handbook. And then recommendation number seventeen, school operations during a pandemic or other health emergency. This is something again that the Illinois Principal Association Model Student Handbook added in July of two thousand and twenty. This will keep our handbook up to date and legally compliant. And then I just put the information, just a note to you guys, it's not necessarily a change in the handbook, but somehow when we talked about schedule changes, Ms. Minor noticed in the handbook that it was, it was correct, but then this last year it reverted back to the way it used to be. I'm not sure because, you know, we use, we use school day books a lot. So I'm not sure when it got sent to them, it just, something happened. I'm not really sure we didn't catch it. So basically, this is just, this is what we've been practicing, and for whatever reason, in this handbook, it got switched back to the old way. So that's about it. Always think there's not going to be that much stuff, and then I start writing it all down, and it's, it seems like a lot.
So the panel of students and parents went through all those with you?
No, no, some of this stuff is not a handbook.
I say some of it.
Yeah, no, it's just basically for that, no, these are things that are sent down from the Illinois Principal Association handbooks. Some of this stuff is not up for, like, for their discussion.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions or concerns or comments?
Just on the dress code issue that you, that you mentioned, I noticed that it, it saved or kept the, covered from the shoulders to the mid-thighs, that's in the new language. And what was the, did you just pull the wording that specifically prohibited?
No. The part that they're wanting is the spaghetti strap tops and the tank tops.
Okay, where is that at?
It should be, if you look at recommendation number six under dress code?
Yes.
So obviously, if they have to be covered from shoulders to mid-thigh, once, if you approve the spaghetti strap tops and the tank top, obviously that wording will have to be adjusted.
Okay. I was going to say, why don't we approve it provided that the shoulders and to the mid-thighs are covered? If they want to wear a top with the spaghetti?
But that would cover their shoulder.
Well, then that particular piece of apparel?
That's the point, yeah.
Wouldn't, wouldn't qualify.
Okay. So the language needs to stay in place is what you're saying then?
I'm saying students are to be covered from the shoulders to the mid-thighs. If they want to have spaghetti straps on something that covers their shoulders, then they're more than welcome to.
You mean they want to?
Where's the underneath of it?
No. I mean, if they want to put straps, I'm being facetious, obviously.
Okay, just making sure.
You know, it's, it's pretty, the new language still has covered from the shoulders to mid-thighs, and I'm in favor of that.
I disagree. And I was on the committee, and it came from the kids, I didn't bring it up, but I disagree. Our uniforms are tank tops. And yeah, they don't have spaghetti straps, but cross-country, basketball, they're all tank tops. Are we going to start changing our uniforms? Because that doesn't, it doesn't follow our own guidelines. So by the, spaghetti straps, I'm not big on the spaghetti straps, but tank tops, I don't, and off the shoulder, kind of like, the cold shoulder, I see nothing inappropriate with that at all, as long as their undergarments aren't showing.
The problem is, is the, is, the discipline is being consistent in carrying out the rules because, you know, it used to be, kids thought there was a two-finger, a three-finger rule, and it was, no, that's not, it's what, exactly what it says in the handbook, cover from the shoulder to the mid-thigh. I'm concerned, and I, you know, I don't agree. I don't, I think we should keep the language that's in there. I think if we go to any kind of top, I don't care how revealing it is or isn't, it's just going to be problematic trying to enforce the rule. And what we have is working. The whole, the whole idea of the sports, and that's, it's just a completely different ballgame. And the only one that's, it's just basketball and volleyball that have that, softball and I guess track. Volleyball, well, they doesn't have, they have sleeves. You know, cross-country runs and sports bras half the time. Well, they couldn't do that in school. You know, so, so.
Those schools, buns are even.
Sure. And, you know, we kind of treat those separate, but the idea of trying to manage that at school is going to be very problematic because you're going to have kids that are going to push the boundaries. They push the boundaries already. I think if we open it up and allow that, they can wear that all, all they want at home, at the mall in the summer, that's great. I just don't think it's school appropriate.
That's my thoughts on it. It's going to be inherently difficult for the administrators to keep up with somebody's interpretation if you lessen the, lessen the standard. The length of the shorts, the spaghetti straps, particularly on our females, but also on shorts on, on the males or anything, there comes a point when it becomes distracting and, and charter is cooler. So it's, I think it should stay like it is.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion to move to approve the first reading of the changes for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two student handbook with the dress code remaining the same as what it was? Is that the way we should word that?
I would, I think that's what you're saying.
Motion?
If I can change the motion to read, to approve the first reading of the twenty-one, twenty-two dress code, or excuse me, student handbook with the exception that dress code remains as it was previously there.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We'll give it to Dean.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mrs. Staub?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Hennig?
Aye.
Mr. Haas?
Aye.
Mrs. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Gau?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. At this time, we'll move on. Do we have any board correspondence?
I would do. We have a thank you note for the family of Walter Ensley. Walter was a longtime head custodian here, and he passed away recently.
We sent them a little gift. Do we have any addenda items this evening?
Oh, we do not.
We have a reason to go into closed sessions.
I would do for personnel and student discipline.
We need a motion to move into closed session.
Seven.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mrs. Staub?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Hennig?
Aye.
Mr. Haas?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Gau?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're now moving into closed sessions. Thank you all for attending today.
Hey, great.
Do we have any action items?
Yes. Move to approve the resolution authorizing notice for remedial warning for Mr. Terrence Hoover as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mrs. Staub?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Reynolds?
Thumbs up.
Give a thumbs up.
Mr. Hennig?
Yep.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Gau?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Apparently they can hear, but they can't. Um, move to approve the new assistant principal contract for Mrs., Ms. Lori Crunk as presented.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mrs. Staub?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Give a thumbs up.
Thumbs up.